I'd invite all of you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then I'll bring the invocation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. Thank you for the rain today. Thank you for the beautiful sunshine this afternoon. We just thank you for the city that you've given us to serve in and to live in. And we ask that you help us make decisions tonight that will help our residents and help our city. And God just give us wisdom as we have those deliberations and make those decisions tonight. We trust you for that now in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Liked again welcome everyone here to tonight's regular meeting, the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. And we will start things off by asking our city clerk Sabra Jeffis to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Taldo.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Mike Overton.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Aaron Huntley.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fujurus.
Here.
Ernest Cape.
Here.
All right. Thank you. We're at item four on the agenda. This is the portion of each regular meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from the residents. If we have residents that would like to speak tonight concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda, we ask that you come to the podium. Please state your name and address, and keep your comments brief. And the council won't take action tonight on whatever you bring forward. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, we'll move on to item five, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look those over. If there are no changes or additions, I entertain a motion to approve them as presented. And we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Item six is procedural motions. What's your pleasure there, counsel?
I'll move for both A and B.
Second.
Got a motion, a second for A and B. Call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. And item seven, we've got a couple of friends here from Upskill. Y'all want to come? And we've got a presentation from the Upskill program and talk about...
Give you an update on how the Springdale residents are doing in Upskill. It's wonderful to see you all again. I'm Carol. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm familiar with have a lot of friends in the room. Let's go ahead and talk about Upskill. So again, you know, understanding that some folks may not know who Upskill is, but we are an organization that's based on a sectoral workforce development model, which means that we really work for the employers to make sure that we're providing the skilled workforce that they need. In our case, at Upskill, it happens to be healthcare. But the model's comprised of three very important parts. All of the pieces integral to the success of the program. So the first part is the employers who give us the recommendations for those high-demand jobs that they need. Then we have the educators. Many of you familiar with UAMS, U of A, NWA, NWTI. And then we have a Health and Human Services component. So that's HARC-NWA that is in the model to ensure that these non-traditional students have access to the resources they need to be able to stay in school and graduate. And we, our role within that is to make sure that we're recruiting non-traditional students who otherwise could not go to school. These are, non-traditional students are 24 years old or older, and they have a high school diploma or a GED. They meet an income threshold of 30% to 80% AMI. So this isn't at the poverty level. A single person is earning about $40,000 a year. They reside in Madison, Benton, or Washington County. They're marginalized and face significant barriers. So they want to go to school, but they work full-time, they have families, and they require assistance with childcare and transportation and even rent. We really are targeting that incremental student is what we call it, but somebody who's not already in the health force or healthcare workforce, but dreams of being in service to other people as a registered nurse or a licensed practical nurse. And we're proud that we are the ones that remove the barriers to their success. So we pay for all training costs, including tuition, books, fees, and required equipment. We provide them with our secret sauce, which is a career navigator who acts as their coach and mentor, connects them to the resources they need, again, so that they can stay in school and graduate. And then for the community, we provide data, and we track and report and identify what those trends are and what the resources are to make sure that we're able to provide all of the support that they need. We're also an important driver of this region's workforce development strategy. Workforce development, as you all know, builds a resilient workforce and helps position us as a regional healthcare destination. You don't have to look at too many headlines to see the Alice Walton School of Medicine, the Heartland Whole Health Institute, that healthcare is a regional priority, as you know. So we're contributing annually to the growth of registered nurses and other critical healthcare worker roles that are living and working right here in Northwest Arkansas. And then also, Upskill NWA is ensuring that community building is an important part of our growth as a program, understanding that broad-based public and private financial support and active involvement of our community leaders here are making the investments to ensure economic growth for its municipalities and residents. And I'll give you a snapshot of how our Springdale residents are doing. So, how are we doing? Well, we're a winning program for all stakeholders. If we look across these measures of success, you'll see that our educational institutions are represented, our employers are represented, our philanthropic partners, such as Accelerate Foundation and Walton Family Foundation are representing here, and the community. So under educational success, we set a goal that at least 60% of our participants would have persisted in the program or graduated. Our actual is 88%. That's powerful when you consider that that persistence rate at NWA, as an example, for full-time students is about 57%. That's pretty significant. For workforce expansion, we said that at least 75% of the participants who have graduated would be placed here with our Northwest Arkansas employers, and the actual is 90%. And of those, 82% were placed within 90 days of graduation. We also have the participant sign an agreement that says they're going to work for that employer partner for two years. For those that have been placed with the employer partner and have had the opportunity to work for them for two years, that retention rate is 88%. Income advancement, which is the piece that I'm most proud of, we set a goal that we would increase an annual household income to at least 80%, or their annual individual income would increase by at least $15,000 a year. Our actual is $32,700 a year, or a 132% increase in annual income. It's life-changing for the participants and their families. I'll show you a little slide a little later. And for the community return on investment, understanding that that participant is going to college here, they are working here for two years. If we just do the simple math, we can see that that annual household salary increase of $32,700 for the 87 graduates we have over the next five years is an annual return of 14, sorry, a total return of $14.2 million. Wow. $14.2 million return right to this region where we all live and work. It's powerful. And when I mention community building, this is the work I've been up to. So what you see here representing the different groups is all the funders that it takes, and then in the black, and then you have community partners in the orange, and you have employer partners in the blue, and you have academic partners in the green. And if I were just to take this one-dimensional slide and fold it over, you would see an entire workforce system that's needed in order to support graduates like Katie that you see pictured right there. It's all of us together. And I've got some special hexagons there. In the orange with the green outline, those are community organizations that serve three different functions. One, they serve as a pipeline and connection to Upskill. They also are a resource for Upskill participants. And they also happen to deliver parts of our programming. So organizations like Dress for Success delivers the career readiness training. Credit Counselors of Arkansas, or CCOA, also delivers financial literacy training. So all of us together with shared goals creating greater community impact. So Springdale residents, how are they doing? What you see here in the two charts up at the top are the total active and graduate students combined. So what you see is that registered nurses make up the largest majority here at 26. Then you have radiological imaging techs, that's our four-year degree out of UAMS, there's 14 of them. LPNs, there's eight. Rad techs, so these are in the pipeline. They're taking prereqs at NWA, there's three. And then you can see the rest of the distribution there. And then, but the folks that are graduating are already working, there's 28 families and individuals that are out there working at our Northwest Arkansas hospitals. They're working as search techs, licensed practical nurses, rad techs, registered nurses, and EMTs. So we're pretty excited. There's 84 Springdale residents that have already been able to take advantage of our program. And in the next slide, I want you to hear from Tyler Peacock. So you're going to see an image, and you'll, I haven't flipped it yet because her testimony, her audio testimony starts right away. But you're going to see Oma on the left, who, if you follow our social media, we've had Oma all over the place since she graduated, and has now been, gotten her job offer from Washington Regional. Then you have Tyler Peacock with her girls in the center. And then you have Marison and her two boys on the right. So we're going to hear from Tyler. See if this plays. Oh. It didn't, but that's okay, because her testimony is written here. Here's what I'm going to tell you about Tyler. One, she's a first-generation high school and college graduate. She broke cycles and generations of poverty. She says, "Thanks to your organization's support, education has become more accessible, and the dream of escaping poverty is no longer a distant hope, but a reality within reach. Your dedication to helping individuals in our region build a better future is commendable, and I can confidently say that your work changes lives." The really great part about Tyler is she's working in manna, and for the first time, she says, she was able to take her daughters on a vacation. Very sweet. Tyler also happens to be in one of the affordable housing communities that the Accelerate Foundation has been investing in, as it is currently investing in a Springdale Teachers Housing Community Project and a special needs pre-K program also here in Springdale. Upskill NWA participants live in Northwest Arkansas. They're going to work in Northwest Arkansas. They will thrive in Northwest Arkansas. And as you can see, they will directly impact NWA's economy. What I love about seeing all those beautiful babies, and you see Oma here with her princess, is that Upskill has, and this model has, a multi-generational impact. What we see out of a study from UT Ray Marshall Center in Texas was that roughly 70% of the children of parents receiving services from Capital Idea, Capital Idea is an organization in Austin that has the same model, enrolled in college directly after high school versus 45 expected. And it's easy to see that that happens when you see this photo with Oma's daughter, who's been watching her study to become a registered nurse, and now she is one. So I am ready for any Q and A. Please.
Hi.
Hi.
I just, I've expressed before that I just love your all's program. I think you do great work. And one of the things that I wanted to mention that I thought was amazing is that I believe it was in 2008, I know my other educators maybe in the room can vouch for this, we studied a framework for understanding poverty, I believe it was district-wide. And part of that piece in how to change poverty across a community, it starts with generalational breaking of those cycles in education. And if they can't get that education, then you will never see that return so many years down the road. And now that's really hard to imagine when you're sitting in that meeting and you're learning about that. But to see it take place, and to see the data, and to see that that's actually working, and that's bravo. Amazing.
Powerful, isn't it, Amelia?
It is.
So much pride. Thank you so much.
Oh, and you mentioned something about special needs pre-K. Is that through Upskill?
It's through Accelerate Foundation.
Accelerate Foundation.
Randall, good to see you. I've also brought for you all, oops, sorry, cards. So at every orientation, we ask the Springdale, we ask all of the participants that we invite to write a letter to their city council. They're not addressed to any direct member, but I hope that you will all read them. There are cards that I photographed because I want to keep them forever. But I think it's important to know what kind of impact is being created through these programs, and hear in their own words, see in their own words, why supporting these programs is so important. I'm going to pass it off to you, Randall.
Carol, I don't know how much you were prepared to do tonight, but could you go ahead and, just so the council knows what's coming, can you explain how this program, how you all are going to hope to work with cities and counties to keep this program going?
Yes, sir. I can. I don't know if Brad wants to come up, but we have convened all of our stakeholders through the NWA council to be able to talk about the strategy for funding Upskill going forward. So we have asked cities and counties to consider funding Upskill through their dollars. I'm proud to say that we've gotten a lot of traction and support. Mayor Sprouse was the first person that said, "We're going to try and figure this out with you guys." And so while I don't have the absolute numbers right here, I'd really have to get them off of my phone.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted them to know that there would be something coming forward that we would need to consider, them to consider.
There will be an ask. The one thing I would add to this is our ask of the cities and municipalities is to fund about a third of the program. Two-thirds of the program is either funded through our foundation, Walton Family Foundation, the state is kicking in money, and then the employers themselves as well.
And just so everybody, we're sure we understand, all the funding for each municipality that each municipality provides will go to students from that municipality?
It's all going into a regional fund to fund all the students throughout the region.
Okay, that's changed.
But the way that we came up with the ask is taking a look historically and understanding we generally get this many people from Springdale, this many folks from Fayetteville and so on.
Okay, so with that funding amount, that request, we'll have a target of a number of Springdale students, and then we, something, something we can go back and...
Audit.
Audit, yeah. Okay, okay, that's great. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir.
All right. We are at item eight, appointments and reappointments. And I'll go ahead and read eight A, a resolution making a reappointment to the Springdale Airport Commission of the City of Springdale, Arkansas. This will be to reappoint Joel Gardner for another term. And I don't think Joel's here. I just met with him yesterday, but not here tonight. But I've read the resolution with the council.
I'll make a motion the resolution pass.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. And any other comments or questions? Anyone? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you, counsel. Now we're at item nine, ordinance committee, and I'll turn it over to Chairman Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We met last week. We have one item before us. It was recommended for approval. It was just basically a restructuring of payment to the water and sewer bond from 2022. I'll go ahead and read it, and if anybody's got questions, Ernest, I think's available. An ordinance amending ordinance number 5717 authorizing revised repayment schedule for the outstanding City of Springdale, Arkansas Water and Sewer Revenue Bond Series 2022B and prescribing other matters relating thereto.
This is, I think Shep Russell might be on Zoom. This has to do with the remediation of the property previously in Bethel Heights that the Springdale Water and Sewer Commission didn't spend as much money as they planned, which is a good thing. So this is a restructuring of paying those bonds back.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Other questions or comments from the council or the audience? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Carry six zero with one abstention. Night, does not have an emergency clause. Is that correct, Mr. Russell?
No, I think it does have an emergency. No, no, it does not. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to item 10, and Sharon Tromberg, our Director of Planning and Community Development, she makes her way to the podium and gives her planning commission report.
Good evening. Thank you, counsel, mayor. All right. The first item we have tonight is a replat, and it's a request to combine two adjacent lots together. And this is just south of Apple Blossom Avenue and north of Graham Road. The title of this reads, "An Ordinance Accepting the Replat, RP 25-05 of Len Estates, Block 2, Lots 20 and 21 to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and Declaring an Emergency." And this was a unanimous vote of approval from Planning Commission. And this really just allows the property owners to have some additional space to be able to build an additional dwelling if they so choose.
Make a motion that the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the audience? Okay, call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Call for the vote on the emergency clause?
Carry seven zero.
Thanks. We went dark.
Went dark. Our next item is another replat. Sorry, it would help if I could...
They're working on it. I can see them scrambling back there.
So I'll go ahead and at least talk about it. The next item we have is another replat. It starts and finishes with two tracks, so two pieces of property, and they are simply taking a north-south dividing property line and shifting it west in order to comply with city code. I wiggled it. Sorry, guys. User error.
Yeah, you did it. Okay.
Let me go to this. So here's a little site plan of the non-large-scale development review that staff currently has. And this was a non-large that was approved, subject to staff comments. And one of those comments being, "We can't have a property line so close to a proposed structure." So this replat is just coming into compliance with their development. And the ordinance, I'm sorry, the title of this reads, "An Ordinance Accepting the Replat, RP 2507 of Holcomb Second Edition, Lots 1 and 2 to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and Declaring an Emergency." And I'll go back. Here is what, so 1A and 2A.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Call for the vote.
Carry seven zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Call for the vote. Oh, I'm sorry, you've got a second? Thank you. Got a call for the vote on the emergency clause?
Carry seven zero.
Thank you. So our next item is a final plat for a commercial subdivision that has nine lots. This is over just directly south of McCray. And for this one, this plat, it actually came to us, and the preliminary plat was approved under the old, the previous master street plan. And so that's why this development doesn't actually stub out to McCray Avenue or to the west. And the title of this one reads, "Accepting the Final Plat, FP 2505 of The Goring to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and Declaring an Emergency." And it included a couple pictures because they already have a non-large-scale development plan that is under review here with planning staff. And we just wanted to give a little sneak peek of what they're planning.
Make a motion that the ordinance pass.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments?
What was your explanation as to why it doesn't stub out to McCray Street? What was that again?
This development originally came to us under the previous master street plan. The previous version of the master street plan did not require developments to stub out in all cardinal directions. So our new master street plan does require that, so that we can help promote connections as developments kind of connect. And so that's why we've had some questions of why doesn't this connect out to McCray? And that is, that's the reason why.
Basically, there's a lot that would block it from connecting to McCray Street. Its only connection is back towards 412?
Correct. Yes, sir.
I don't want to open a can of worms.
It was originally called the Shaver Edition. So Shaver Street is the main.
Does that also have, what would, would that also be the reason that there was no need for a waiver of street improvements on McCray? I mean, if that had, I don't, I don't know. If that had been to stub out, would that have, I realize that's water under the bridge now because that's, that's, that's the old, we're under the old plan.
If it had been submitted today, they would have. You would have seen them come before you, or we would have asked them to go ahead and make that connection.
All right. Okay, counsel, it's to you unless you have other questions.
Sarah, do you need to speak on behalf of this?
Oh, we have the representative here if you have any questions.
Jay Young with Development Consultants, representing the project. This project actually does have a street waiver that was approved during the preliminary plat phase for improvements on McCray. And since preliminary plat had been approved, we're at a point now where all improvements are built and we're ready to find a final plat. But at the time, as Sharon said, we did not have a requirement to connect. We did request a waiver for improvements on McCray, and it was approved.
Oh, you did? Okay. So you did have to ask for that.
I believe it's noted on the front. Correct. It was just the required street improvements along McCray, not a connection to McCray.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, we do have a motion and a second. Are there other questions? Anybody else in the audience?
Would any kind of fencing be handled during large-scale development and things like that? Fencing along McCray would not be dealt with just in the... Fencing along McCray would not be dealt with just in the?
Yes, it would. It would be dealt with in development stage. And right now, I don't know if we can, I'm sorry, flip back, where along McCray, because we know that as people drive along McCray, and this is getting into the development, which is not the plat, which, which we're talking about this evening, but we asked for additional landscaping, some nice vegetation as opposed to a fence along McCray, and to have some nice lighting and help it look like a nice facade as folks drive by.
As for those things during the plat process, even though the large scale is not, I mean, we could still ask for even more, I guess, during the large scale or what?
Yes, so we have two simultaneous projects under, under review. So the plat, which is just the subdividing of those nine lots that you all are hearing, and I was just, I apologize if I introduced any confusion, but I was just trying to give you a sneak peek of a non-large-scale development that is currently under review. Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? All right, if y'all can bring that up, I think we're ready to call for the vote.
Carrier seven zero.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause?
Carrier seven zero.
All right, thank you. And the last item that we have, this is a final plat for a residential subdivision that contains sixty-one lots in an SF-two zoning. And the title of this reads, "In Ordinance Accepting the Final Plat, FP twenty-five dash oh six of County Line Square to the City of Springdale, Arkansas, and Declaring an Emergency." And here is a snapshot of what this, this development looks like. And we also have the representative here if anybody has any questions that I can't
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments by the council or the audience? All right, call for the vote.
Carrier seven zero. Randall.
Does have an emergency.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Okay, call for the vote on the emergency clause?
Always count on Randall and Brian for the emergency clauses.
Brian's been falling down on the job lately.
Carrier seven zero.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you, Sharon. Item eleven, Finance Committee and Chair Jeff Watson. Jeff?
Thank you. The Finance Committee did forward several items to council with recommendation for approval. Maybe one of them is on our agenda that is, was not considered by the Finance Committee. I'm not sure, but at least A three recommendation for approval. Item A has to do with the creation of a new position. The title to this resolution is a resolution authorizing the creation, creation of a new position. Colby, do you want to address this real quickly?
Yes, sir. As we discussed at committee meeting, typically, we don't bring new positions to you mid-year, but we did discuss the fact that the senior center is ahead of schedule and under budget, by the way. And as good of a job as Lori has done with the senior center and growing it and with the new building that will be done in August, we feel like this is the appropriate time to bring this to you. This is for an assistant director position, and we feel like this is needed for her. The position grades anywhere between, well, in the budget for this year, it would be between twenty-seven and forty thousand dollars. That's the budget impact for this year. It would basically double that, and that's what the grade, job would grade out at. So we think it's needed for the rest of the year.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? Anybody in the room? Call for the vote.
Carrier seven zero.
Item eleven B has to do with the refunding or transferring of monies that were held by the city in payment lieu of situations that I've been asking the city to look at for a long time. I'd like to commend Colby and other staff, city staff for taking on this project. I'm sure it was very time-consuming and difficult, but I appreciate all the work that went into this, being able to look at this fund and also being able to refund some of the citizens that had paid into the fund and the money had not been used. This resolution was forwarded to council with recommendation for approval. The title to the resolution is a resolution to refund capital designated for improvement projects.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. This was a project, you know, Jeff thanked us for our work. I probably did the least amount of work on this. GIS.
No, I did the least amount.
Well, we do know that the city clerk's office, Cody especially, along with the engineering department, really Ben Peters and Ryan Carr took the reins on this. The good, the good thing about this is, is not only did we identify those funds, we also have put in new procedures moving forward that will help us to avoid not having a good accounting for this. But we did cover from the periods of July nineteen ninety-three through December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four, we identified thirty-seven thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety cents in payments that were, it was capital designated for improvement projects that we have identified as projects we will not be doing. So we're going to make an attempt to refund that money. That's why the resolution is worded that way with attempt. There, we're going to refund that amount to people that we can identify. We may have to work with the Secretary of State's office to refund that money and let them try to locate someone. Sometimes these people have passed away, the entity is no longer in existence, but we will do our due diligence to try to return that money to those individuals. The other amount that you'll see in this resolution is seven hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. Those are projects that we identified as being completed, and we paid for those either out of the capital improvement project fund. And as you remember, in two thousand twenty-one, we did away with that fund, and we started using money out of the unrestricted general fund, or money has been spent out of the street fund. And what we're asking tonight in this resolution is, we do need a little bit of time to go, this, this is an exhaustive process. We need time to identify exactly where all those dollars originated from in our accounts. So right now, we want to move that into the unrestricted general fund, and as those are identified, we'll move them into the appropriate funds. The council does have the authority to tell us what fund to put that in. One of the suggestions at committee meeting from Mr. Overton was to move it all into the street fund, since these are street-related projects and improvements, sidewalks, but some of them were paid out of the unrestricted general fund or the CIP fund. So whatever your pleasure is, is what we'll do.
But that was something that you were going to look into to see where these things came out of?
Yes.
So we pass this resolution, then the work will be going, and you'll be able to annotate those dollars?
If it's, if it's passed as presented, what we would do is move it into the unrestricted general fund, and as we're able to identify, we'll move it into the fund that it was spent from. If it was spent from the CIP fund, it will go into the unrestricted general fund. If we identify it as being spent out of the street fund, we'll replenish that fund. But there was a thought of, let's just put it all in the street fund, which is not how this was written, but we'll do whatever the council asks us to do.
So, so in doing this, is there kind of a timeline, how long it will take to maybe say, okay, we've identified these, here's what we're presuming where they came from?
Yeah, the, the big project that we are laser-focused on right now is our audit, and it's going to take the help of the city clerk's office. So I would say in the fall, we should have all those details ironed out. But this would give us the authority to move it into the, the fund that it was spent from unless you tell us tonight to do otherwise.
If we pass this as is, could you think you could report back to us maybe in October or something like that?
Absolutely.
And just give us some?
And the council, if we do it as, as is, the council could always determine at that point, we want to transfer money into the street fund if you'd like us to do that too. So we'll give you a report in October.
I'll move the resolution pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Okay, call for the vote.
Carrier seven zero.
Item eleven C was also forwarded with recommendation for approval. The title to this resolution is a resolution expressing support for the Springdale Veterans' Memorial on property owned by the City of Springdale, Arkansas.
If you'll recall, committee, the Springdale Veterans Memorial organization is applying for a grant, the Arkansas Community Assistance Grant Program, for funds to go towards the construction of this, Springdale Veterans Memorial, and they have to have a place to put it. And I know we've talked about this over the years, and this would just say that if they received the grant funding by the end of the year, that we would authorize the memorial to be constructed on the properties on the east end of J.B. Hunt Park. It's noted in the packet on red page, thirty-seven, roughly five acres. We would still own it, it would just be allowed to go there.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Overton, do you, did you hear enough of that? This is the Veterans Memorial. Would you like to vote on this? Well, I'll, I'll let you sit down, and we'll call for the vote. All right, call for the vote.
Carrier seven zero with one abstention.
All right, thank you. Guys, thanks for being here. Go forth and raise money.
I see Colby walking forward for item eleven D. It has to do with purchase of a golf cart. I should turn it over to the golf cart expert, but, but I'll go ahead and read. This resolution was also approved, forwarded with recommendation for approval. A resolution approving the purchase of a transportation vehicle for the new Springdale Senior Center.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. This is a resolution that we, we're asking to take funds out of a restricted fund that Lori has over at the senior center. She has a hundred and six thousand two hundred thirty-six dollars in that account, as we reported in our financial update last Monday. We do have a need for our seniors to get them transported to and from the building. With the parking lot, we do have an appropriate amount of parking, but there's going to be other events where we need to shuttle people from other parking lots or down the street. We, we just feel like this is a good asset for the senior center to have. Lori obtained three quotes as required by state law, and she selected this one, sixteen thousand eight hundred seventy-five dollars and sixteen cents.
Move resolution forward for approval.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Other questions or comments? Anyone? Call for the vote.
Carrier eight zero.
Thank you. Item eleven E also forwarded recommendation for approval. It's very confusing, so we're definitely going to need Colby to try to explain some of this. The title to this resolution is a resolution establishing retirement contribution support fund and authorizing the transferring of funds from the unrestricted general fund to the retirement contribution support fund and for other purposes.
All right. So if you'll remember, I brought something to you a few months ago, the two dash five one retirement fund, because we had an employee that retired and opted for a certain type of retirement. She, she was an elected official, and we realized two years ago that we had what we call a forfeiture fund. Anytime an employee is not vested fully, that portion, a portion of the city's retirement contribution is put into a forfeited fund, whether they're terminated, they retire, they, they stop working at the city for whatever reason, that money goes into this forfeited fund. The issue I have with that is, that's sitting in an account for another entity to draw interest off of. It does nothing for us sitting in there, and we can only use it for one thing, and that is to use it towards contributions towards the retirement of our non, our non-civil employees. Right now, we contribute six percent towards retirement, and while that's generous, if you compare it to the private sector, if you look at other entities, other municipalities, counties, even law enforcement, firefighters, you know, basically, they, the LOPF is the retirement for our police and fire. They get twenty-four and a half percent towards their retirement. Other municipalities that are part of APERS, they're at fourteen and a half percent retirement. We're at six. Even though six is generous, I do know of two specific positions that we lost, people we were trying to recruit here because the retirement hit that they would take. We feel like it's important to try to increase that, and I think strategically using this money to create and establish a retirement contribution support fund would be so beneficial to our employees instead of another organization drawing interest off of this. The only way we can use this money is towards the six percent retirement. What I'm asking for the council to consider is for us to use that nine hundred thousand dollars and burn through that, but we've already budgeted for that nine hundred thousand dollar contribution. So it creates a surplus in the general fund at the, at the end of the next twelve months. And what we would do is take that, that nine hundred thousand dollar surplus, which will be in the unrestricted general fund now, and start the employee, the retirement contribution support fund. And what I would love to do with this fund is let this build up accrue interest, and over time, let us raise our retirement contribution. Now, we are free to do that if we have a, a year where we feel like there's going to be a budget surplus. We can go ahead and do that. But over time, as this money compounds, my goal is to use that fund to start increasing the retirement over the next few years for our employees. With nine hundred thousand, you're not going to gain a lot of interest, but we need to start somewhere. And this may be nothing that we see over our lifetime, but it may be something that in a decade or two, somebody's really going to appreciate this, the future employees of the city. I also, the way I wrote this is that it, section one is that the retirement contribution support fund would be established. Section two is that nine hundred thousand shall be transferred from the unrestricted general fund to the retirement contribution support fund. And three, that future forfeiture account balances greater than fifty thousand may be used towards the city's retirement contributions, and an equal amount should be transferred from the unrestricted general fund to the retirement contribution support fund. What I'm asking in section three is basically so we don't let this happen again. Anytime it hits fifty thousand dollars, we're asking for your permission to take anything over that and go ahead and use that towards the retirement, which will create that surplus, and our finance and accounting department can go ahead and make that transfer. This will always start adding into that retirement support fund. And, you know, ideally, as I reported in our financial report on Monday, we've accumulated twenty-six million dollars. The nine hundred thousand would be seed money. What would be optimal for us is if the council would consider to put any additional money into this fund so that it would accrue more interest and, and almost be a shot in the arm for us. And I know in our, our last, I think it was our budget meeting, we discussed our emergency fund. Is there a need to prop that up? We've gone through a pandemic and a tornado and didn't use that, so I don't know that propping that fund up is what we really need to do. But maybe we need to consider putting an injection into accounts that can help our employees now, considering our employee health fund that we created last year or even this fund to help gain that interest.
Colby, go ahead. At committee, you touched on the difference between APERS with other cities, many of the other cities, and what we're able to do with our employees' retirement. Touch on that so that, for those that weren't here.
As far as the number?
As far as the difference between our retirement right now, and it, because that is a, that, that has been a, a deal breaker in the past.
It has.
In recruit, in some recruitment.
Yeah, as I was saying earlier, we, we've, we've had two that we've identified that their reasoning for not taking the job here is because they were on APERS, and to transfer here, they lose out on a great benefit. As the mayor said in a committee meeting last week, we passed that window years ago. To join into APERS now would be. To join into APERS now would be, it, it would not be a wise business decision on our end. The best move is for us to just gradually increase our own retirement fund, even though we're at six now, 14 and a half percent is quite a bit with APERS. And so we, we feel like if we can do this on our own, it will take more time, but we can bite this off. But having an infusion into that account would help us greatly.
That doesn't go for, because LOPI and, and whatever, they were, they cover the retirement of their police and fire, right?
We pay it. We pay the 24 and a half percent.
So LOPI does, doesn't pay their retirement?
No, LOPI just manages that. That, that's the retirement system. We pay into it for our, our law enforcement and firefighters.
But they get 14% now.
No, they get 24 and a half percent.
They get 24 and a half percent.
We pay that in our budget. So when we bring you our budget, that's put into our payroll. We, we calculate 24 and a half percent, and so we pay that into their retirement on their behalf. And with APERS, other municipalities are paying 14 and a half percent for, for employees. We pay 6%.
We're, yeah, we're required by law to do the LOPI, but we weren't required to, to be part of APERS, which is for the non, for the rest of our employees. And we chose years ago, I say we, none of us were here, I don't think, but it was, it was decided years ago not to participate in APERS and to do a different type of retirement and, because we weren't required to do APERS.
So Kobe, on section three, it talks about balances greater than 50,000?
Yes.
What about balances less than?
It would stay in the forfeiture fund. We, because that can be used for contributions. It can also be used for fees, even though we won't have that much. We feel like that's a very safe amount to leave in there. Once we hit 50,000, though, and we start accumulating 60, 70, 80,000, we would love to transfer the balance above 50,000 into, and do the same process, where we burn through that, creating a surplus in the general fund, and then moving it into this new retirement contribution support fund. We just, we just feel like 50,000 is a very safe number.
So we're cre, we're creating a new fund, we're calling it Retirement Contribution Support Fund, is that correct?
Yes, sir, and that will be within the general fund. This will not be an outside fund. It's going to be a restricted account, similar to the Act 833 Parkland Set Aside. It will reside within the general fund.
And it will be invested separately somehow?
Yes, we'll be able to invest the money, we'll shop those rates and, and.
That, that fund will be its own investment, basically.
That's correct. It won't pool with other funds.
So how does this increase the retirement for our employees?
So what we'll do is, as this accumulates and starts compounding, we'll have more funding in there. And during the budget, in the budget session, you'll notice that we do transfers into other funds, like the street fund gets a large transfer. We'll be able to, at some point, once, once we're able to increase, maybe let's say a percent, 1% increase to our retirement is $157,000. Once we start accumulating that much interest at least, we feel like that's the year that we might want to start contributing. Maybe we go half a percent that year. Maybe we spend $80,000 out of that account, but it will contribute and we'll do a transfer. But eventually, it'll be paying for itself.
And how long, how long do you think it would take for us to build up to that $150,000 mark?
If we don't.
On interest only?
If we don't seed it with any money, it will probably take eight, nine, 10 years to get to that point. And that's why we're saying we might want to consider an injection since we have.
I'm not, yeah, Amelia, I'm reading into your question a little bit, but I want to make sure y'all understand that also, that it was discussed at committee, but, but if the, where the money is right now, we don't have, we're, we're much more limited in how we can invest it, so we're, we're limited in the return. But with, with getting it into our general fund, then we have more options to find, to get better return on it.
And that's, that's not to say that in budget meetings, we can't increase from 6 to 7%. We can do that out of our budget, but as this compounds and gains interest, we can do a transfer, and hopefully eventually, we'll be able to have enough in there every year to transfer, that we can go up to 8, 9%, and eventually catch APERS with what they do. But I will say this, I, I feel more confident in our retirement systems than I do in what I've seen through the, the, well, I think our old police and fire pensions are doing excellent right now, and have all the confidence in the world in them. And there's going to be a large sum of money at some point, whenever all the beneficiaries are paid out, and, and I don't know that the state retirement systems can say that. They've been managed really well. And I think Voya has been good for us, even though we're going to shop those things to make sure it's good every so many years, to shop everything that you have, just to make sure you're getting the best return. But what we do with Voya has been very flexible for our employees, and I, I think we can manage it just as well here in-house.
I move the resolution be adopted.
Second. We do have a motion and a second. Any other questions before we vote? All right, I'll call for the vote.
Carry's eight zero.
All right.
Thank you. Item 11, I'm sorry. Item 11F is for payment of invoice. It was not considered by the finance committee, but I'll go ahead and read the title to the resolution. A resolution authorizing payment of an invoice, 2023 bond project number 23BSC1.
Traditionally, we don't put things on the council agenda that did make committee, but we also feel like it's good business with our construction companies that we deal with, to go ahead and put these on the agenda. Any items over a million dollars is required to have a council approval, and so we didn't want to leave this construction company hanging for an extra two weeks, and so we wanted to put this before you tonight.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion a second to approve the resolution. Other questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Carry's eight zero.
All right, thank you. We're at item 12, Police and Fire Committee and Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We had one issue come before us in, in the committee, and it was forwarded with recommendation for approval for Fire Station 10. It's exciting, and I'm going to read title of resolution here. Resolution entering into a guaranteed maximum price contract with Milestone Construction Company for the construction of Fire Station 10, 2023 Bond Project Number 23BPF1, and 2023 Street Bond. And Kobe is here to talk about this resolution.
If y'all remember, the annexation of Bethel Heights was a few years ago, and it expanded the area that we needed service. And so in this last bond program, out of the 2023 bond program, it was approved by the voters to build Fire Station Number 10. And so we negotiated the price, it was originally 5.1 million. We were able to negotiate that down to 4.79 million. And this, Milestone was hired as construction management on that, and so they're the ones bringing forward the, the guaranteed maximum price to us, contract to us. You will notice in, in the way we wrote this resolution, just for clarification, this is paid for out of the fire bond and the street bond. We have seen quite a bit of inflation since we originally priced out these fire stations, and so we are going to be utilizing the street bond fund to do the street improvements on this project in order to fit everything under budget.
Counsel, just to let you guys know, Mike Davis from Milestone is here if you guys have any other questions.
Okay. Brian, you read the resolution. We have action, counsel?
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Other questions or comments? Anyone? Call for the vote.
Carry's eight zero.
Thank you, everyone. Item 13, any comments from the council?
Mayor, I'd like to return briefly, if I could, to, I had maybe a question for you on that Upskill.
Yes.
NWA.
Yes.
I got the impression that there'd be something coming in the future.
Right.
Having to do with funding.
Right, you know, the first year was funded with, they funded with ARPA funds. And so we knew that there, if this, if this was a success and they were going to keep going, they were going to have to come back for more funding.
So that was going to be my question. If, if, and when that does come back, before that, if we could have some, at least if I could have some refresh, refresher on our involvement with Upskill.
Okay.
And how much, you know, how, how we're involved with the ARPA funds.
Right.
And all that.
Okay.
Just kind of so we know what we've done.
All right. We'll, we'll for sure, whenever the time comes, we'll talk about it at committee, or if that's a, if that comes up during budget, we can do it then, or I can, I, I can, I'm happy to give you an update on, or, or a kind of a review of how we did it in the past. Yeah.
Mayor, do you think maybe we could get something from all of the places that we invest in, that we give our dollars to, that are like that, you know, like the DSA, for instance, who, who wanted to be self-sustaining, we supplement them, and then, you know, so I just.
Well, yeah, we, we contract with them.
Can we have a breakdown?
We contract with them for events, just like we contract with the chamber for, so I expect that to be, at least my request would be that that would be ongoing. So they're, they're always.
So how, how many, what I want to know is how many of these entities that are needing Springdale funding to be self-sustaining are we involved with?
Okay.
That would give me a number and maybe some titles to them.
Okay, we can work on that.
Thank you.
I know we want to wrap it up, but let me, let me go ahead and talk with you for just a second about Upskill, and give you a little bit of history on that. And y'all will remember this, I think, as we, as I go through it, but I'll make it quick. When the ARPA funds became available, Upskill came to us with a plan, and we, Washington County, Benton County, all those entities you saw listed in her presentation, all agreed to an amount based on population and students they thought they would serve. We were going to, we paid for that out of ARPA funds. ARPA funds, if you'll remember, had some pretty heavy reporting requirements. And we worked with their staff, Cody, in, in finance, worked with the staff at Upskill, and it was, it was under a different direction, but we just never saw eye to eye on the reporting requirements. And rather than put that money at risk, we took that money, we came back to council, we took that money that we had committed to Upskill, and we just gave it directly to NWTI and NWA. We did that a few months ago.
For the nursing programs.
For the nursing programs. And let them, then, then NWTI and, because NWTI and NWA could give that money to Upskill without the report, and the reporting requirements went away. But when the city did, and we could give it to NWTI and, and NWA, and the reporting requirements go away for us. So that's how we skinned that cat. And still, and the results, and what, what Accelerate and Upskill did was, I, I think they, as you see, they met every, they exceeded every goal, they did a great job, and it's a great program. So they're coming back now, they, they plan to come back, and they will have a, an amount for each entity, county and cities, and it's going to be up to each city, whether we decide we want to help fund that or not. And so, but that's the history on that.
So we've only done it one time?
We've only done it once. We've only done it once with ARPA funds. But now ARPA funds are no longer the deal. So we could give directly to Accelerate now, if y'all choose to, and those onerous reporting requirements won't be there, because it'll be general fund money. Okay?
What's the difference?
Between Accelerate and Upskill?
Upskill is part of Accelerate. Accelerate's the overall, Accelerate is what used to be the Care Foundation, okay? Their name is now Accelerate, and Upskill is a program of Accelerate. And it's focused on upskilling in the healthcare field, to helping our, helping students get training for healthcare. Okay? When you brought that up, I thought, well, this is as good a time as any, to at least. But we will, y'all will have plenty of notice when they come back and, and when we know how much they're, they're going to ask of Springdale. Okay? All right, any other comments from council? How about, do we, how about staff? Anybody? No? Hey, Ernest, you got anything?
No, sir.
All right, I don't have anything either.
We've heard enough, a move would be a good.
All right, thank you all. Good meeting, appreciate it. We're adjourned.